Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board Meeting is now called to order. It's 5:36. Board members, we have six members present. Three of us are in the boardroom. Mr. McGuffey, Mrs. Thompson, and Ms. Hilliard and Dr. Hairston are on the phone. Mr. Figurs will be with us momentarily. Therefore, we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Board members, we do have one amendment to make the agenda. So I would like to amend the agenda. We need to pull item I-4 from personnel. And so I would move that we adopt the agenda as presented with the removal of I-4. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sevak, seconded by McGuffey. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the December 19, 2023 regular board meeting minutes?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. McGuffey is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Sevak. Board members, we'll begin as we typically do with the video highlights from the instructional television team.
We've earned 955 attendees at the Military Gala. The theme for this year's gala is celebrating excellence.
And then an evening with formal attire and a five-star dinner at the Jackson Convention Center.
JROTC has a nearly 100% graduation rate. Their commitment to excellence extends beyond the class sense and the parade itself. They are active members of their communities, volunteering their time and talents to make a positive impact on lives of others.
JPS JROTC cadets, family, and friends gathered for the 11th Annual JPS JROTC Gala.
Do you have what it takes to pick up the mantle of freedom and justice and to continue the work at Maguire Evers?
And thank you to our amazing cadets for all that you bring to Jackson Public Schools, to the district, and to your individual schools.
In the start of the new year, let's envision this as our return after halftime break. We played an outstanding first half.
And the second half of the 2023-24 school year kicks off with a virtual staff time vacation ceremony.
So we'll need to work with you and other stakeholders to help ensure that our revised plan articulates our hopes and dreams and commitments for the next five years.
JPS celebrates the outstanding achievement of Mora High School and Jackson Middle College scholar Kristen Rhodes, who made a perfect score on the PSAT test.
Oh, yeah, perfect. Great. I didn't really register that it was like big amazing thing at all.
Ms. Rhodes received a Presidential Scholarship from Jackson State University, leaving one teacher at all.
Had to close some assignments because she was working so far ahead of me.
Ms. Rhodes already has ambitions of what she wants to do after her education.
And I'll be a math teacher for our high school. Because my thinking of people who really helped me get to where I was and really can come to mind are all the math teachers I've had over the years.
For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.mrs.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Instagram at JPS Student Voices, and Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
I want to thank the team, as always, for providing those highlights and a little levity in one of those clips there. Board members, as we begin this new calendar year and the second half of our school year, I thought we could use just a little bit of extra grounding and inspiration. And so I've asked our 2023-24 Administrator of the Year, Principal of McWillie Elementary, Dr. Sarah Harper, to come and share a few words of encouragement. Dr. Harper?
I'm Sarah Harper, your 2023-2024 Administrator of the Year and Principal of McWillie Elementary, as Dr. Green just shared. Last week, Dr. Green led us into charge about halftime. So it reminded me of this past football season. My husband and I are big Mississippi State fans. We have season tickets, hail state, and we sit in the end club for football games. And at the end, when the clock strikes zero at the end of the second quarter, we always see these guys come out, they rush out of the door, they run down the hallway, they run down the stairs, and I don't know, I didn't know what they were doing. So I'm nosy. I asked them one day after the game, what, where are you going? Why are you going so fast? You know, what is so important? Well, what they're doing is they're taking their film from first half and running straight to the locker room. And they're looking at that film in real time, right then and there, and they're trying to see what they need to do to adjust for second half. So they're not waiting until next season. They're not waiting until after the game. They're doing it right then and there. So now, Team JPS, it's time to analyze our data in our first half and make adjustments for the second half. To the Rules Oversight Panel, our JPS Board, please continue to enforce the rules and make the difficult decisions to ensure that our students are successful and that our district rises to the top. To our team's owner, Superintendent Dr. Green, thank you for overseeing the operations and management of each department. Continue to make the strategic decisions to put our team ahead of the rest. To our general managers, our JPS leadership team, it is your time to remain knowledgeable and to adhere to the current regulations, to inspire the coaches to do their best, and give us the resources that we need to win. Use your diverse set of responsibilities and prioritize skills and qualifications to find the right fit for each school. To our head coaches, the principals, now is the time to instruct, organize, and motivate our teachers and students. You must convey the information clearly, communicate proper techniques, strategies, and rules of the sport so that every player understands and does his or her best. To our offensive coordinators, the teachers and instructors, now is the time to teach the fundamentals and the standards and the skills for each individual player. Use the state standards and pacing guide to come up with the offensive game plan to readjust for each player if needed. To our support staff, our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, our campus enforcement and custodians, thank you so much for making sure that our scholars are at school, they're safe, and they have an environment that's conducive to learning. To our fans, our parents, and community members, we need you now more than ever. We need you to rally behind our players and coaches so that we have a winning season. We need you to hold the coaches and players accountable, lift them up, encourage them, help them, and support them. And to our players, the most important part of the team, our students, now is your time to shine. Show us what you know. Play your heart out. Use the skills that your coaches have taught you throughout the year and apply them. Do your best, never give up. College football players practice an average of three to four hours a day. So scholars, we want you to practice. Do your homework, pay attention in class, ask for help if needed. We want you to be successful so that you are the one being recruited to any school that you want to go to. Our district is only successful if each and every player in JPS is successful. So now, team, let's play hard during the second half. Go get this win. Here's to a great second half. Thank you.
Aw, thank you so much, Dr. Harper. You really committed to that analogy, didn't you? You went hard. And who knew you had all that knowledge of the inner workings in football? I want to appreciate you and share my appreciation for you and your leadership and the way that you serve as a model for all of us, for your commitment to our children and commitment to our team and community. And I just want to thank you. And thank you for those words. I could actually absolutely see every piece of that puzzle coming together. And as I do see the pieces of the puzzle here in our district coming together, I'm looking at folks' eyes and folks who were looking a little worn down before the break. And save for this week of mayhem with the weather and whatnot, I definitely see and feel this renewed energy and renewed effort, renewed commitment to ensure that our scholars get everything they need in this second half of the school year. So again, thank you and want to wish us all the strength, courage, and wisdom that we need to do, what we need to do for our scholars. Now, board members, as you know, due to extreme weather conditions and some of the reverberating challenges, we didn't return to school following the, excuse me, the MLK, Dr. Martin Luther King, break. And because of the temperatures and some of the water main breaks and the really finicky, almost like whack-a-mole, heating systems that we have in our buildings, we've just not been able to reopen our schools. And as it turns out, we, across the city, are continuing to experience some challenges with water pressure, which in and of itself is a challenge, but in several of our schools it also makes it impossible for us to run our heating system. So unfortunately, we will have to continue virtual learning for tomorrow, Friday, the 19th. And so that notice has already gone out to parents and families. I do want to thank our educators. As much as we've been at this now for a few years, this work around virtual learning and utilizing technology to deliver instruction and to engage with our scholars and all of that, it's still not our, it's not like our dominant hand. It's still not the kind of work that we're so used to all day, every day. And so I want to thank our educators for continuing to lean into this still relatively new format for instructing our scholars. Want to thank our scholars for showing up and for giving of themselves and being vulnerable and engaging in different ways during virtual learning. And I absolutely want to thank our parents, who are having to manage their households and their work schedules and just all of the challenges that come along with virtual learning as scholars are home. And we, again, we are really hopeful that we'll be able to bring our scholars back to school into in-person schooling as quickly as possible. We'll continue monitoring throughout tomorrow and over the weekend with Jackson Water, with regard to water pressure, but also monitoring the buildings themselves and the heating systems and working with all of our technicians to ensure that we're ready as soon as possible and hopefully Monday to bring all of our scholars back. We have been informed by Jackson Water, by the leadership there, that they anticipate the water pressure building back up through the night. And so we'll have an opportunity to get in tomorrow and monitor and see that that's actually happening in buildings and that we're actually able to use the toilets and flush them and all of those things that are pretty necessary for schools. And so we'll keep our parents, our families, the community updated on that, but I wanted to make that note. And now I'd like to provide a few updates regarding optimization and some related issues. Our team has continued its work around staffing. I know that's a really major piece of concern for many people, not the least of whom are our educators, our team members. And so our team has continued, our leaders have continued work on the staffing plans at each of the schools and across the district to ensure that as many of our team members who want to remain with us will have a place to land at one school or another if their school happens to be closing or consolidating with another. And so we do plan to bring the contracts for our certified team members and employment letters, to deliver those following the February 6th board meeting. That is assuming board approval of the contracts on February 6th. This is about a month earlier than we delivered contracts last year, and so we're excited to be able to do that sooner and to be able to make commitments to team members sooner so that that's not a lingering concern for them. We remain very hopeful that we've got plenty of space for all of our people and that there may have to be some shifts in terms of the specific day-to-day work or, excuse me, the location for their work, but that we've got space for team members. So excited to move that forward. Also, as promised, we have established the Facilities Repurposing Advisory Committee, and I'm excited to get that moving and off the ground. This committee has been established to help us to thoughtfully consider options for the reuse of our excess facilities. We've enlisted Latoya Cuts, who's done considerable work with the Jackson Redevelopment Authority, as well as work in other locales around urban development, urban redevelopment. She's got extensive knowledge and experience in that, and so she will serve as consultant to the committee and to us, to help us to kind of marshal through these decisions that need to be made around the repurposing of our buildings. The majority of the committee members were recommended by you board members, and so excited to have that representation from across the city, as well as others that we've identified who have extensive work in the redevelopment or development field. I'll name for you now the confirmed members of the advisory committee. There are Alex Lawson, Sheri Wright, Kimba Ware, Dr. Reginald Buckley, Chris Myers, Tamika Jenkins, Otis Taylor, Charles Taylor, Roy Decker, Chloe Dotson, Mary Elizabeth Evans, Bishop Ronnie Kudip, Derek Johnson, and Gary Brown. These individuals have already committed to serving on the committee. I believe we have one more individual who is still pending, but we're excited to move that forward. We've already scheduled our first meeting and excited to share that. First meeting will be held on January the 30th, at which time we will begin to consider some initial proposals for building repurposing. And so we're excited to have some, in addition to just kind of laying the groundwork and the framework for the committee and establishing our ongoing meetings and collaborative work. Excited to have some specific initial proposals to discuss and starting to get some feedback from the committee on those. And my goal is to bring to you recommendations that, along with the feedback from the committee on any of those recommendations. So you can look forward to receiving that as we move forward. And then lastly, board members, in addition to establishing this advisory committee, you'll recall that we tasked Duval Decker and Associates with developing a comprehensive study of our properties, and that work has continued, in addition to some support that they've been providing to us on the closeout of Lake Heiko. The information around the comprehensive study of our properties will be used to support the committee and some of their work and thinking about some of the specific proposals that we get or that we develop for repurposing of those properties. And so at this time, I want to invite Mr. Roy Decker to join us and provide some updates on the study itself, as well as some updates on the continued closeout effort at Lake Heiko. Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Board members, it's great to be before you. Dr. Green, thank you, board members. It's a pleasure to be before you and to support the scholars, JPS, the board, and the city of Jackson in this monumental task to make a great school district and also to optimize your footprint in terms of real estate and holdings. So, Lake Heiko, very quick. The work that Entergy is doing to clear the property is ongoing. I was out there last week. I'm monitoring it every month. It's moving. Their schedule shows them finishing next January, February, so 2025. We see no issues or problems with the work, other than we wish it was going a lot faster. We have requested final grading and drainage plans from the Entergy engineers, and our team member Alan Engineers is working to secure that. And we only don't have it because of the holiday delays. So we have no resistance. That is coming. So that'll lay the groundwork for future planning to repurpose that property for the benefit of the district. The work we're doing on the repurposing support, as you know, we did a comprehensive inventory of all the properties. At the time, the original closed schools, we actually evaluated all the schools, as well as all of the empty parcels of land. So we have that complete inventory available. Our second phase of, that was our first phase of it, second phase of work was really to benchmark JPS's challenges against many other cities around the country. We found several other cities and school districts that have gone through this process. We organized a really good workshop with Kansas City School District last summer with the administrative team here. They were really instructive and very helpful in helping us frame our work to support you in terms of planning for this process. And the final phase that we're getting very near completing now is actually to provide the board with best practices, policy, organization of how to operate this kind of repurposing plan, and then for examples of what good development proposals would look like, both financially and also with all care and love and support for the local communities that these projects, that these buildings are in, and how to go about securing their input into the process.
I want to thank you, Mr. Decker, for that continued support. Really look forward to engaging the broader committee and having them to parse through some of the information that you provided and that your team has provided over time, as well as some of the lessons learned from the other districts. I think that'll be really, really helpful for this committee, not just thinking about the property itself or the community in which it sits, but, you know, also in its connection relationship to the school district and how any of that could be informed or inform the other. I want to pause and see if there are any questions from board members with regard to these updates, the advisory committee, the study, the comprehensive study that Duval Decker is providing for us, and the update on Lake Heiko. See if there are any questions about those.
That means I gave a good report.
I asked them. I was just waiting for them.
I spoke too soon.
So, Mr. Decker, thank you for the update. And specifically, this first question is related to Lake Heiko. So early on in the closeout, you and your firm evaluated the Energy Closeout Plan, and one of the concerns that you raised with the board were around, I guess it would be a lack of information on how the silt would be treated, and which raised concerns that the ground may not be stable for redevelopment, and then by extension, unable to be fully returned to its previous state for development. I know that in a previous engagement, Alan Engineering shared that it appeared that Entergy was taking the steps to ensure that the silt was being conditioned, mixed, compacted in a way that would signal that the development, the closeout, was in fact progressing in a grade that would allow the land to be returned to its previous use and for full development going forward. Based on your last monitoring visit, what's your assessment of how the soil is being treated? And are we going to be, as of the last visit, are we progressing in the right direction?
We are. And although they were not as cooperative as we would have liked, they did hear us, and they are conditioning that silt. So it is, it looks like it is being stabilized, so based on what we're seeing. And we're seeing no issue that would lead us in otherwise. So right now, it appears that the property will be returned in a usable state.
And by usable state, we're talking anything we would want to develop.
Correct.
That's not going to be an issue flagged, based on your professional expertise?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up really quickly on Heiko while we're on it. Another issue that had been sort of raised, at least over the last few months, was questions about the presence of wetlands, wetland mitigation and all that. Do we have any update on information, either from the Corps or from Entergy, about?
That we do not. There were a few lingering things like that we do not have any update on, but we are, it's one of the things we're asking for right now, is verification on the clearance of wetlands.
Any other thoughts, questions, reactions, board members, to any of that?
What is the, what's the next phase? So I know we've talked about community engagement, particularly around the next use for Lake Heiko. What's the, and I believe Mr. Decker is involved with that, and so what does that look like? When does it start? If the closeout is anticipated to be one year from now?
So you are correct. We are engaged, and we're originally engaged, to do the master planning, including community engagement, planning, development proposals, infrastructure planning for Lake Heiko. And to a certain extent, we got sidetracked into the environmental assessment and the monitoring of Entergy. So there are still funds left unencumbered by us, unused by us in that contract to resume that planning work. And that's one of the reasons we're asking Entergy for the final drawings, plans, stormwater plans, and assessments, so that we can be ready to start that when you all are ready to resume that process.
So why don't we give some thought to, you know, using the January, February of '25 as the closeout for Entergy, using that as a marker, come back with some clearer timeline around, you know, when we might start? I'm reluctant to start too, too early with community engagement around that and then have it sit for months, waiting on the actual closeout, but we can at least get a clearer kind of pathway for that engagement and share that with you, board members. There's also, we've also, in, over time, received either proposals or pitches or interested parties for various projects at Lake Heiko. And I won't start to name them, but for various projects. So there's still, there's been quite a bit of interest. So, yeah.
I see.
Sewing together the, what we know about the property with the, what folks have brought to us, let alone what we may, ideas that we might generate through the committee, and engagement with the broader community to get more different or, you know, some approval of some of those early ideas. All of that will have to kind of fashion a pathway forward, a clearer pathway forward. All of that will have to kind of fashion a pathway forward, a clearer pathway forward. And we should be able to have some further direction on that next month.
Yes.
Again, we'll have to be flexible with it based on when the property is turned back over to us. But just to kind of manage expectations about when any of that could, should happen with community in particular.
One last question, from me at least. You mentioned that this sort of final phase is sort of examples and best practices and all that stuff. Given that they're at least going to be discussing initial proposals for some sites, and I think you're on the committee, if I was listening correctly. So given that you'll be in those discussions at the end of this month, when should we expect to see that best practices list? Because I would anticipate those things come, I'd like to look at them before we start getting proposals from the committee or anything like that.
Sure. What we did is we took, well, we actually took five separate schools of the original 10. And we looked at what would be the process that you would go through for demolition? If a school is really, it's unlikely to be redeveloped or sold, but could be a really great asset for a local community? And what would be a strategy for turning that property then into a park or recreation area or something that would really benefit local residents? We looked at what would be an example of a historic preservation project for one of the schools that could qualify for historic tax credits. We looked at, and then if it had open property, what could be the supplemental housing or other uses that would really make sense? And around those other supplemental uses, we looked to the Jackson zoning code and the requirements so we stay, you know, connected with that process. But also best practices for good development, for good community building, safe streets, safe playgrounds, places for children to play, and how you go about site planning and planning for those kinds of developments in and around existing school buildings that can be incredible assets to potential developers and to the community. We also looked at mixed uses. You know, if we have a, if there's a school that is near a busy road, could part of the building or part of the site be used for live-work combinations? So all sorts of options that really, we see not as proposals for a particular site, but we want you all to have the benefit of thinking creatively about how best to serve the communities and put these projects back in service.
Do you have a, by when do you think we'll be complete on that last phase?
A couple of weeks.
Okay. So not, so around the same time as the first meeting? And then we can share, because I heard that as well, to share that with board?
Yeah, we're very, very close. And along with each of those examples, we have financial profiles. So, you know, what's the market? What's the construction cost? What are the, what's the gap in terms of financing? So these, those financial models can be used by the board to really evaluate a developer's proposal and understand if it makes sense or not or what the gap is and how they might be filling it.
Can we get a copy of the list of the committee?
Absolutely. Yes. I want to thank you, Mr. Decker, for being here and for providing those updates. Look forward to the continued work.
It's an honor to serve JPS and the scholars. Thank you all.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Dr. Green, I did have a question on optimizing for equity. Not for you. You're good. Thanks, Mr. Decker. So one of the things you shared in the remarks were that for anyone who wanted to remain with us, there would be a place. Did I hear that correct? Okay.
No, we're working towards creating a place for anyone who wants to remain with us to stay. And that's specifically around the certified staff. So I'm trying not to make the guarantee that everyone will have a job, but that's the way it looks, like everyone will be. But there again, there'll have to be, there'll have to be some flexibility around if you're licensed in a couple of areas and you've been teaching in this area, we need this other area, would you be willing to teach in this other area? That kind of flexibility, which is not always...
No, I understand that. I understand what you're saying there.
So there are a few nuances that make it hard for us to say absolutely everyone here, but in terms of numbers, the numbers work out.
Okay, that's, I guess that...
The licensure doesn't always work so neatly.
Right, right. And so you said of all certified staff, so that includes principals, assistant principals, teachers, or you just talk about teachers?
No, we have had just, well, it's everyone outside of the principals.
Okay.
Principals, even to include assistant principals. So for principals, we, and I believe we had shared previously, we do have to and are launching a reduction in force process where when all is said and done, looks like there will be four individuals who will have to either assume a different role or will not have a role next year, but will not be placed back in the principalship.
Okay.
So when all of the conversations are done and all of the assignments are made, there are, I believe that number is correct, there'll be four individuals who will not be returning in the principalship as a result of the reduction in force.
Okay. So when a reduction in force is brought to the board? Right now, it's looking like that will include four positions?
Could, potentially. The question is whether or not they identify...
Right, right.
Whether they, we identify another role that they...
Understood. I was just trying to size what we might be...
The universe of...
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions about, I do want to make sure that that's, that staffing piece is as clear as possible. We actually met with principals today, so they're aware of that process and where they individually stand in that process.
Okay. Beyond that, thank you. Thank you for pulling the committee together. Thank you for getting the meeting scheduled. I look forward to getting that work underway and reviewing proposals. So thank you for moving on that.
I'm really looking forward to that. We also, and I didn't mention this earlier, we've also identified a project manager outfit to help us with the projects that will, that are more related to optimization. So the buildings that will be receiving scholars, the buildings that remain that need additional support around HVAC or need new playgrounds or where we want to expand some outdoor learning, all of those projects, many of that being funded through the limited tax note. We've got some additional support in helping us to get those projects moving and to keep them on schedule so that more of that work can be completed by the fall. So just understanding our own capacity and other projects that are already happening, major projects like Pecan Park, Jim Hill, Bailey, and some others. We're excited to have some additional help for that.
Great.
That includes like transitioning some of the, like the middle school building to be an elementary school?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All of it, yeah. One specific example would be a middle school that doesn't have a playground or multiple playgrounds, an early childhood one or upper grade one or whatever the need might be. Those are the kinds of things. But also some beautification, new facades, security doors, cameras, restroom renovations, HVAC, of course, all of those things. And that's not to suggest, I want to be careful not to suggest that everything you might want to be done in those buildings will be done by the fall. But a number of projects that are not so invasive and where we could do the work while we have scholars in the buildings can be advanced.
I've got unrelated to that, so I just want to make sure we're sort of done. I just wanted to maybe reiterate or talk for a minute about the, you said the word HVACs, about, a little bit more on water pressure and HVAC and what the plans are for, I mean, like that was a laundry list. We posted a list up here. I think the number that I asked earlier, I think the number was 37 of our 50 operating schools. What happens, what happens next week? And I know you can't predict the future, you don't have a crystal ball, but what happens if 25 of them are online and 25 are not? You know, what's our, what's our breakpoint on putting kids back in the schools? If, even if it's some, but not all?
Right. Great question, and we've been asked this previously, where certain schools tend not to have or have less of a water pressure issue or less of a challenge with heating and cooling. Can we send them back and not have others? So I will say, just from past practice, where we've had one school that was, that had problems, one problem or another, we've kept them home. It gets, it gets really challenging when you've got multiple schools because you, especially when they span grade levels, grade groups, divisions, because you're likely to have some siblings in one and in another. And so we've got to be mindful of that and how families operate with siblings between a couple of schools. I don't have, to answer the question directly, we don't have a breakpoint at this point that's too many schools to open the district. We're anxious to reopen, very anxious to reopen and bring folks back in person. And so that's something that we'll have to consider. At the same time, just to be a bit more hopeful, based on what we've seen and what we've heard from Jackson Water, they do intend and expect for water pressure to be building throughout the evening. And so we may be in a place where most homes have sufficient water pressure and then it's just getting to, or many, some, I don't know. And so it's just a place where, you know, larger buildings with the more, more robust plumbing systems need more pressure. We are hopeful that we'll have more pressure in the morning, which will then allow us to get in and for the buildings that, where the water pressure impedes the heating and cooling, to determine if the heating and cooling is sufficient to bring folks back. As part of the issue today, they were thinking that they, Jackson Water, was thinking that they would have water pressure back up tonight, but that just wouldn't leave us any time to assess buildings and say, oh, yes, we're ready. And to do that with more notice to families. But we do believe that we'll be able to have most buildings back up tomorrow and certainly over the weekend to prepare for that.
Do we have facilities that were, where the water pressure issue is not a citywide issue or not an area issue, but they're busted pipe issues and things like that?
I don't know the answer to that. Let me ask. Yeah, because there was, there was kind of a mix of issues and, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Sebag, board members, Dr. Green. We did have a busted backflow preventer at Rain's Elementary. We had a contractor come in yesterday, made those repairs, and the water pressure from the backflow preventer was restored. But then with the lack of water pressure throughout the city, Rain still does not have adequate water pressure. So we have had some busted pipes at a few schools, but none are impacting the overall water pressure throughout the school. So, but that was the only one, Rain's.
Which is progress.
Yeah.
Because there was a time when it was just us. I don't know if it was just us, but it was more of us. Other questions on that? So to close out the, I think the original question, while we don't have a breaking point, hey, we are at half of the schools now or a quarter of the schools or what have you, which would signal a district-wide closure, I received the push to, to the extent possible, to open as many buildings as possible.
I'm a parent with kids in two schools and I think I have confidence, I told somebody earlier, I have confidence that one of them was on the low-pressure list, given where it is geographically in the city. And so I'm sensitive to that, but getting the kids back in has to be an immense priority for us. It's just so much better for the children.
Agreed. Agreed. With that, board members, concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. All right, board members, we are now on to public comment. I believe we have two public comments. So community members who would like to make public comments should email their request to Ms. Rosalyn Williams at roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms.us, no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 p.m. the day of the meeting. Before we get started, I just want to set the expectation for those speaking. There will be three minutes for comments. Ms. Williams will keep the minutes, excuse me, Dorian Turner will keep the minutes. The board believes the public's comment is very important. We will listen and consider comments, but we will not respond at this time. As always, if there is an issue that has not been taken up with leadership at a particular school or with district administration, we encourage so. Board members can all be reached at our email addresses, which are on the JPS website. So Attorney Turner, I'll turn it over to you.
Board members, the first person who signed up to address you is Lakendra Walker, who'd like to address you regarding partner with JPS. Is Ms. Walker here? Okay, the second person who requested to address you, Herb Sanders, regarding high school baseball in JPS, is Mr. Sanders here?
So do I get six minutes?
Nope.
Thank you for hearing my feedback and my comments. My name is Herb Sanders. I was born in Quimby County a long time ago and lived a lifetime in Colorado. God called us back to Mississippi about 10 years ago. I have a nonprofit called Full Count Baseball Ministry. I'm very passionate about youth baseball, youth softball mentoring. My concerns are, in the 10 years that we've been back, Jackson Public Schools have discontinued girls' fast pitch softball, discontinued girls' slow pitch softball. And the baseball season this year is looking very sketchy. Last year, Callaway didn't field a team, they didn't have a coach. Murrow had a coach, he left. They're still scrambling, trying to find, I think Murrow just found a coach, but my concern has to do with the fact that there's no quality high school baseball. There's only one sanctioned team from Jackson Public Schools playing in Massa, that's Jim Hill, and they're playing at the 6A level. And what happens with that? The kids who are being looked at by other colleges from other schools are all transferring to Jim Hill. Okay? There's no feeder systems, like the principal from McWillie was talking about, coaching and pumping up coaches and quality of coaches. I've been doing that my whole life. I'm an old high school coach, old pastor, but the quality, we're not doing. There's scholarship money on the table consistently with historical black colleges. If you look at historical black colleges right now, present day, they have players who are coming from the Dominicans, Australia, Canada, because we're not playing. And we live in a state that has historically developed outstanding people...
He's backwards.
Students. Thank you. And those scholarships... And those scholarships are on the table. I'm a big believer in student athletes. This is not just about athletes. I'm also a big believer in accountability and structure. And I would just love to see Jackson Public Schools do a better job athletically with that. I'm not a guy that's going to stand on the sidelines and throw rocks in baseballs and just complain. I threw my hat in the ring to help the young coach over at Murrah this year with his team. I'm not looking for compensation, but I am hoping and believing that we can do a better job in athletics with baseball and softball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Okay, board members, um, next we'll move on to our information-only items. Uh, we have our S R three monthly update, and this evening, I believe Mr. Devin Boone will be presenting the information. Great.
Good evening, board members, everyone in attendance. Uh, it's an definitely honor to be here, very humbling. I'm grateful I was able to present for you all tonight. So, we're going to cover our monthly update, covering the month of November sixteenth through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'm aware of today's date, so keep in mind that these projects, this is updating from what happened second place over a month ago. So, we're going to start with Powell. We know you all have the presentation in front of you, but we like to highlight several projects in particular. So, you can see here, we are at thirty-six point six percent completion as of December fifteenth. So, we clearly will not reach the January twentieth, uh, construction, uh, deadline right there. So, the issue is going on with Powell Middle School. We had a delay in the delivery of the windows. There's a common delay a lot now with our equipment. So, as of today, we have seventy-two of the two hundred and thirty windows that have been installed. Uh, contractors working really hard to get that project up to speed, up to date. They have currently requested additional days due to weather and the window delay. From our perspective, from being in the school, being boots on the ground, and from meeting with owners, well, the owner, the architect, contractor, we are anticipating this project will be done around the end of February. Uh, what they have done, a lot of progress in the bathrooms, the boys' and girls' restrooms, and, uh, that installation of the tile, the sheet rock, painting. The project is going along very well now that they have the windows in place. Our next project is going to be Boyd and Green Elementary. As you can see, that completion date will be March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. We are very happy to announce this project is now substantially complete. Uh, that is a big deal. It's like being at a school for us. When a contractor completes a project ahead of schedule, that is a great thing. We have already conducted the punch list. The windows have been installed. They look really nice and really excited about the progress there at Boyd and Green Elementary. Very excited about that. So, our next project we'd like to pay attention to tonight is John Hopkins. As well, we see that the completion percentage is eighty-five point eight percent complete. However, we are substantially complete, as we said tonight. We were waiting on the HVAC equipment for the rooftop to be installed. Once they're mated in late November, contractors install them immediately. They are operating, they're working. We have the punch list for those as well, and we should be closing that project out as soon as possible. Uh, next project here is McLeod. We're sitting at forty-nine point six percent complete. We are recommending a twenty-one day time extension. The time extension is due to a shift in the project schedule. The contractors had to rearrange their construction schedule to make sure they did not disturb, um, the structural time throughout the day. Once we sat down with the architect, once we settled the contract, we worked it out. The contractor began working overtime, weekends, holidays, and now they're, they're really humming along very well. All of the classroom restrooms are complete, the mill work is complete, and the gang restrooms are, are rolling. Uh, we have electrical work being done there. So, at this point, we're very pleased with the progress being made now that we've worked over that wrinkle as far as the time. We are anticipating, if everything continues at this, at this rate, that the project will be complete around the end of February. If, if contractors continue at the same pace, this project should be wrapped up around that time. So, our last project is become Park, but those are the four that we wanted to, uh, highlight. And of course, substantially completed projects, well, they packed, Boyd Elementary, the restrooms, the HVAC, well, the middle school, and well, we have these other projects that have been awarded that are in contract phase. So, I want to thank for your time, and we'll be happy to feel any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Boone. Board members, are there any questions, comments? All right, thank you for the update. We look forward to continued progress. I'll ask you one question. I skipped over Com Park. Is that one on track? Will that one finish on time?
Well, at this point, we have a change order to extend the contract. The issue at Com Park was during the construction, the contractors found some structural issues. So, to install additional structure to secure the building, because that's a nine million dollar project, and it will be a shame to essentially do the work and then have the building not be structurally sound. So, we have, um, a change order to extend that project by eighty-seven days. We have never the contractor to ensure that students will be able to attend school once it opens. Uh, not only students, scholars, but teachers as well around July, because we know how important it is for that school to be available for J P S scholars and staff.
When was it supposed to be completed?
That actual completion time was scheduled to be June fifth.
June fifth. Okay. Okay, and it sounds like, again, assuming that eighty-seven days are, nothing is added on to that, we will be able to have students there?
Right. We, we meet with the contractors that are O A Cs, and they, and we stressed, students need to be able to attend school in July. And they have a major push. We're pushing them. We're doing everything in our power with the district's support to make sure the students, scholars, teachers are ready for school to begin, um, July.
Okay.
So, what, what is expected to be left is just exterior work. So, July, they're able to come in and begin the process to begin school.
Great, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, board members, uh, next we'll invite Mrs. Keisha Marshall Thomas, our Assistant Superintendent of the High School Division. Um, up to the podium, we have our school board presentation, and tonight, uh, Murrah High School will be in the spotlight.
All right. Ms. Dr. Green, tonight we will have our first, um, student school board policy presentation. And, um, it is a Murrah scholar, Casey Clark. Um, Casey is here with her mom, Ms. Tamira Clark. Casey is, um, a senior at Murrah. She's a part of the A P A C academic and dance team, National Honor Society, a member of the cheerleading team, and student council. And Casey's, um, future aspirations are to major in business and entrepreneurship. And she wants to also minor in marketing and international business. So, at this time, I will invite Casey up for her presentation.
Hello, good evening. How are y'all doing today?
Good evening.
Today I will be, my proposal is about benefiting and reviving the driver's education course. My name is Casey Clark. Again, I am the J P S Student School Board Representative of Murrah High School. J P S driver training policy. The superintendent shall develop a curriculum according to the rules and regulations established by the Mississippi State Board of Education, which will provide driver education, training to eligible students of the district. The State Board of Education shall purchase by, for cash or by lease purchase, agree with the necessary equipment and materials. The board shall provide the facilities and the necessary personnel. The program shall be open to all district students who are fourteen years of age or above and regularly enrolled in tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade. A temporary permit issued by the Mississippi Highway Safety Patrol shall be issued invalid only while a student is actually enrolled in the driver training. The permit shall expire at the end of the course. The state driver education and training program in secondary schools of this state shall include a program of study for alcohol and safety education as it pertains to the driver and highway safety, and shall also include instructional, instruction related to organ and tissue donation, and organ and tissue donation procedures, and shall include instruction on the litter laws of state and the responsibilities of the driver and all passengers to dispose of litter in the proper container. Any driver, any driver education student under fifteen years of age shall secure a learner's permit issued by the Department of Public Safety, which shall be valid only while the student is under the direct supervision of a driver education instructor and is actually enrolled in an approved course of driver education, which consists of thirty hours of classroom, six hours of dual driving instruction. The learner's permit shall expire at the end of the driver training course. The Department of Public Safety shall charge a fee of one dollar for the issu- the issuance of the learner's permit. The Mississippi Public School Accountability Standard for the policy is standard seventeen. Students will receive thirty hours of classroom instruction, twelve hours of simulation practice, and three hours of behind-the-wheel driving experience. Students will attend class Monday through Thursday from four thirty P M. until six thirty P M. The instructor will schedule driving time and simulation practice. Each student will receive simulation practice and behind-the-wheel instruction according to group assignment. However, to receive a Mississippi learner's permit, students must test out the course and read the state age requirement. The current driver's education program is set at the C D C Center in Jackson, Mississippi. Students, all students of Jackson Public High School, fourteen and a half years of age or older, may attend the driver's education class. And registration for the driver's education class is held daily at the C D C Center from four thirty to six thirty P M. Each student must provide an original copy of their social security, birth certificate, and a completion of school attended status form. The form must be complete and noted by their home school. Ending dates will vary from each student's completion of the three hours behind-the-wheel class, and the cost of the class is two hundred and sixty dollars. Now, I will be introducing my driver's education proposal for J P S. While it is awesome that J P S offers a driver's ed course to scholars in our district, my proposal is that the course be offered at school during the regular school day and at minimal cost to the students. My proposal was influenced by the many accidents that teenagers, including my classmates, have experienced. Reports on reckless teen driving and car accidents that indicate that it is a major killer of teenagers today. Our main priority should be the safety of our students. Many of them are learning how to drive in high school, and having a course such as driver's education offered during the regular school day will positively impact them in our community. And here are some quotes from the students of Murrah High School. I think having a driver's ed program will be very beneficial because it will save many lives. A class that I could take during the school day would be helpful because I failed my test twice before getting my permit. I've always wanted to be in a driver's ed class because sometimes my parents or other relatives don't have time to teach me or don't have the best knowledge when it comes to driving. Here are some quotes from the staff at Murrah High School. Any subject that will correlate to a life lesson should be added into the school's curriculum, driver education included. Students may take driving more seriously because they are held accountable for it and are getting a grade. A driver's education program is something that they can take and use for their entire life. The idea of driver's ed being offered during the school day will be, will really support our efforts of ensuring that school experiences are relevant and well-rounded. I also think that it will improve attendance because the reality is, students come to school to participate in extracurriculars. I think many students will come to school for the opportunity to take this class. I like the idea of, of the school meeting a community need. I know a few students who don't have their license because of access to transportation to take the driving test. It would be nice to see the school system be able to support students in that way. And here is some data that I have gathered, that I have gathered on driver's ed. Safe driving habits, along with the rules of the road, are taught in driver's education. Other than meeting the minimum age requirement for a license, which is typically between fifteen and sixteen and a half years of age, at least thirty-one states also require teens to take a driver's education course, according to the Association of National Stakeholders and Traffic Safety Education. This information comes from U S and World Report. The risk of motor vehi- motor vehicle truck crashes is significantly higher among teens. Per mile driven, teen drivers aged sixteen to nineteen have a fatal car crash almost three times as high as drivers who are twenty and older, according to twenty-twenty data from the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety. Driving is usually something that you're going to do your whole life and pretty much every day of your life, says Tim Beckham, project manager for the American Driver and Traffic Sa- Safety Education Association. Car crashes are the second most common cause of death for teenagers, he notes. So, it really is a course to protect them, one from one of the main causes of death for their age group. Now, I'll present to you an example from Clayton High School. Clayton High School offers a driver's education course during the school day. Their requirements are fourteen years or older, a regularly enrolled student in ninth grade and above, and a full-time student in the respective school. J P S representatives could collaborate with the local school districts for innovative ideas on how the program could be structured within J P S. Here are a couple of suggestions for cost savings. A rotation schedule for already purchased district cars to be assigned to school sites. Student fees can be established to support insurance, car maintenance, and curriculum fees, and a release of liability through a waiver. Now, I will be giving my own personal testimony. As an eager student, I was always ready for the ta- for the task to learn how to drive. It was difficult to find time between my working parents and my extracurricular activities. As time went on, my friends who, who are, of course, older than me, all of my friends are older than me, um, that by a few months, they had their permits, they were learning how to drive. Having the opportunity to attend a driver's ed course in school would have better prepared me for the road, but giving the correct, but have given me the correct and the, it would have given me the correct and the actual knowledge to learn how to drive, to be a confident driver in the streets. Because I am now seventeen, I got my license at the beginning of August, I got my permit and my license at the same time. And unfortunately, I was one of those kids who did not pass the driving test on the first or second time. So, honestly, uh, driver's ed course is something that I always wanted to have implemented in my school system, and I always asked about it with my mom. She always said, we had it during our, back in the day, during our, um, in our, in our school system, I wonder why they don't have it during the regular day now. And honestly, I was one of those students, among others, who did not know that we had a driver's education course at the C D C. So, incorporating that into the actual school day will give a lot, a lot of students a lot of access to it. And now, are there any questions from the board?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Board members, any questions, comments?
I mean, my, my only comment is, I just learned something, right? Because I, I also had to take driver's ed, uh, you know, third block, and I had a baseball coach that taught me how to do it, to tie together, you know, baseball coaches as well, so. Do you know the number or the percentage of kids that are J P S students who take the driver's ed classes at, at C D C? Because you said you didn't, you weren't aware of it, so obviously, it's not a hundred percent.
Yeah. It was, it's a couple of students, of course, every day that go to C D C to take their, um, classes or things of that nature. But as me, I didn't know that we had a C D C, um, program, so I'm not sure of the exact, uh.
We had nine in the fall. We actually have.
Nine?
Nine. Nine, nine, nine students. Nine students that enrolled that took it in a fall.
How many, how many do you think that we had that are eligible to take it?
Eligible to take it? So, all the students who are fourteen and up.
Yeah. There we go. So, nine out of six thousand, okay. Just checking.
And what's the capacity?
So, we only have one instructor and one car, and it's, um, between those two hours, them having the ability to, you know, take the thirty hours that are required and the three hours of, um, road training is, is what it is. So, it's a small population, but, you know, we've had up to twenty at a time, but twenty is the max that we'll take, um, in the night program.
Twenty.
Did we just offer one class a semester?
Yes.
Okay. So, the most we can do right now is, is forty students a year?
Forty a year, and we end the summer. We also offer during the summer.
Okay, is that also?
A lot of students in the summer that actually take it. I think Dr. Amy's, your children took it in the summer.
So, so this isn't required?
We have more in the summer.
Yes, we have more students in the summer that take it.
So, the state of Mississippi, I'm assuming, is not one of the states that requires you to take driver's ed?
No. No. And MDE just now started to fund the driver's ed um starting this year. And so we will be, you know, submitting a application for, oh, sorry. So we were happy, um we were excited, you know, to work with Casey on this. Um this is something that we've been looking forward to. Um MDE has been doing a lot of work around um driver training in the schools. And so they now will be able to um provide some reimbursements to district for having a driver's ed program. But it has to be offered during the day and a um half a credit awarded.
I love this idea. Um I'm really glad you brought it before us. The other thing that I think that's important for us to, to keep in mind as a district is um, it actually saves households money. Like when, when, when you add a driver to your insurance, one of the questions they ask, if you're adding a sixteen-year-old or seventeen-year-old to your insurance, one of the questions asked is they go to driver's ed, and if the answer is no, households are paying more money for that insurance. And so, so you know, it's, 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 yes, I love the safety thing. And tragically, we know students have died in car wrecks um in, in our system. And so there's the safety and better driving. Um and I just also think the financial stability is, is well. So thank you for bringing this before us. I, I learned something too. I, I actually didn't know. I, I guess if we didn't have capacity, that may be why we don't advertise it too hard. But maybe with some more resources, we can look at ways to expand this, this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, for continuing to bring uh those opportunities before us. And Ms. Clark, thank you for such a thorough presentation. All right. Uh next, we move on to our information action items. Oh, and great logistics, Ms. Williams. Mrs. Marshall Thomas will be presenting the request to approve the renewal agreement between the National Education Equity Lab and JPS for a dual, and a dual enrollment program.
Good evening. Again, the administration recommends the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding between the National Education Equity Lab and the Jackson Public School District for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. The National Education Equity Lab is forging a new kind of relationship between colleges and high schools rooted in their belief that while talent is evenly distributed, opportunity is not. The Ed Equity Lab empowers colleges to take a more active role in developing and inspiring the next generation of leaders. In partnership with pioneering universities such as Yale, Howard, Cornell, Arizona, UConn, and Harvard, they will provide online college-bearing courses to teacher-led high school classrooms across the country. By enabling high school students from historically underserved communities to take actual college courses from college professors, students can build the skills and confidence needed to apply to and thrive in college. In addition, participating students earn widely transferable college credits at no cost to them.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Board members, are there any uh questions, comments? Uh Mrs. Marshall Thomas, how many students attended these classes last year?
Um we had a total, so in the spring, we had a total of, I think it was eighty-four. And in the fall, we had a total of, I think it was seventy-six.
Okay. So significant use of the, and we've been using this program since two thousand twenty-one?
That's correct.
Right. Um and I think um, I didn't ask this, but in, so this may be funny, but it looked like overwhelmingly, our students are passing these courses, and they're getting credit for taking them.
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved. Mrs. Thompson, a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Next, we will move on to the request to approve the agreement between MedCor and the Jackson Public School District. Attorney Harris, our general counsel, will present this information.
Good evening, board members, board president, Dr. Seaback, Dr. Green. The office of the General Counsel and West Management is recommending that the board approve the renewal agreement between Jackson Public Schools and MedCor, which is a nurse tri- triage service that we use for our workers' compensations claim reporting. Um this service has helped us to significantly reduce the lag time in employees' calling and reporting claims. Last year through MedCor, eighty-two point six percent of incidents were reported within three days. Currently, and I'm sorry, and eighty-eight point two were reported within seven days. Currently, through MedCor, seventy-four percent of our workplace injuries are reported within twenty-four hours, which is in accordance with our district policy. Eighty-five point six incidents are reported within three days, and eighty-nine point seven of our incidents are reported within the first seven days. And our best practices are that eighty percent of incidents are reported within the first four days. So now I keep coming to you all talking about the reduction in the lag time. I wanted to talk a little bit about how that translates um to us as a district. It's helping us get employees back to work, um getting them back to work, injuries reported, getting them the treatment that they need, and getting them back to work sooner. The percentage of employees we um returned back to work in two thousand twenty-one was twenty-five percent of all the calls that were reported um in a short time. In two thousand twenty-two, that number increased to thirty-one point one percent, and in two thousand twenty-three, at the end um of the year, it was forty point seven percent of the employees that we are able to turn to work. So it's a good service. It's working, and we're requesting that we renew the MOU between MedCor and Jackson Public Schools.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. Board members, are there any comments, questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I approve.
Second. Was that Ms. Hilliard? Ms. Hilliard has moved. Uh Mr. McGuffey, a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Harris. Next, we have the request to approve the monthly financial report uh for the month ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Margaret Purnell, our Executive Director of Business Services, will provide the update tonight. Mrs. Purnell.
Good evening. Uh President Seaback, the board members, Dr. Green, the uh my colleagues and JPS family. This evening, the administration recommends that the board approves the uh monthly financial report for the month ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The Plurner Monthly Financial Report contains the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the bank reconciliation report, and the district uh cash flow report. Some of the highlights from uh December thirty-first um report includes uh our beginning financial fund balance was roughly twenty-two point seven million dollars. Our fund balance currently as of December thirty-first was about sixteen point three million dollars, uh compared to on December of twenty-two, which was uh roughly about nineteen million, so it's a three million dollar decrease from there last year. Our expenditures this year, this month, uh exceeds the revenues approximately about six point five million dollars. Uh sixteen section revenue, right now, we're about at four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, which is about forty-eight percent of the budget collected. Um on the uh special revenues for the fund balance, our child nutrition fund, it's um, the fund balance there is uh still exceptional, about ten point seven million dollars we have there. Our um special revenue fund shows uh in our ex, uh title, in our ESER funds, IDA, and other special revenue funds. They show a negative balance, which is uh about seven point eight million dollars. But of course, you know, that's due to our drawdowns that we requested by the twelfth of the month, uh the following month on, during that time. So of course, um that's, we are have, I think this month, we have actually requested about five million dollars of that seven million that's coming in in January, which should be there uh then. But of course, it's recurring, it's going over and over each month. But we are still anticipating and getting our drawdowns and getting our money in. On the budget status report, um as of December thirty-first, there are um the anticipated revenue, when you got the year-to-date collected, um this is all on just the district maintenance, our budget was like two hundred point seven million dollars, and all other funds is two hundred and eighty-four million, total budget four hundred and eighty-four million altogether on the revenue. We've collected about thirty-six point two on the district side, forty-four point four on others, thirty-seven point one overall. Our uncollected revenue is about one hundred and twenty-eight million on the district, one seventy-six million on the other. Anticipated expenditures, we have spent about seventy-nine point one million, which is about thirty-nine point four percent of the budget, unexpended about one, one hundred and twenty-one million. Collected versus expended, six point five million dollars, as we stated before. And uh these are consistent pretty much with our previous years, previous year revenues and expenditures. The bank reconciliation, uh all of the district bank accounts are uh with board-approved depositories, and all of the bank uh statements are reconciled as of November the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The cash flow, the annual cash flow was about four million dollars compared to last year. At this time, it was about five point five, we're about twenty-eight percent um below where we were last year, last year's position, uh which is uh represents one point five million dollar difference there. Other management key per forms indicator report, um the revenue report versus the act report headlines for December thirty-first. Overall revenue collected, we're about two point one percent less than where we were last year, about one point six million dollars. Our overall expenditures are about three point one greater than where we were last year, roughly about two point four million dollars higher. Our average LUM is roughly four hundred thousand dollars less than where we were at this time um last year. And our um personal and um benefit line is about five hundred thousand dollars greater than where we were at this time um last year, uh as you can really see on page thirty-two. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Purnell. Board members, any questions? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved. Dr. Harrison, a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Mrs. Purnell.
Thank you.
Next, uh we have the um consent agenda items for plans. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and have been an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I approve.
Ms. Hilliard has moved.
Second.
Mr. McGuffey, a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, the motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items general. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item general?
I so moved.
Second. Mr. Figures has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda personnel? I'm not gonna, I, I've got, I have my question answered.
So moved.
Mr. McGuffey has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Thompson, a second. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh board members, we do have an item for executive session. Um is there a motion to consider executive session?
I so moved.
Mr. Figures has moved. Mrs. Thompson, a second. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.